We're back in session and we do appreciate your patience with that short recess. Mr. Dice, if you would.
Yes, as I indicated when we started the proceedings, this would be the opportunity for council to ask any questions of any of the applicants. You may not have any questions. I want to repeat to you also the statement I made at the very beginning that you could make a decision tonight on these applications or you could defer to the next meeting on the, under the conditional use provisions on those matters for the next 45 days. Well, you would, or another, you would be in session again in, this is October, in November, well before 45 days are up.
Mr. Dice?
Yes.
That being said, I'm not sure if this is the right time, but what I'd like to do, there's so much info, I'd like to make a motion that we defer making any decisions concerning the temple until next council meeting, just so we all can digest all what's been said here tonight. Give us a chance to take a really hard look at it.
It's a public hearing, is it not?
Yeah. Yeah, if it please, you can't, but I think it's productive for the applicant as well as the public. If, that's your intention to make that motion during the regular meeting?
Yes, sir, I will.
Okay.
If I may, it may be the appropriate time to address it now.
I apologize.
That's, oh, no, no, that's okay. There's something I wanted to address and I wanted to pick the right time to do it and I think now is the case. I've viewed the recording of the September 4th meeting where this application was discussed and I believe Mr. Johns has voiced his opinion regarding the project, unfortunately so. I think it precludes him from being able to vote unless he votes in favor of the project because he's already voiced a bias and his bias was, "I'll do everything in my power to see this doesn't happen," and I believe that's a quote. And unfortunately, because he voiced before the public hearing, his opinion and predisposition before hearing all the testimony, the law indicates that he really is tainted now as a fact finder and cannot vote. Now, that's his decision to make. I'm asking him to recuse himself unless he's going to vote in favor.
No, in that case, I'd look right at you and I'll be more than glad to recuse myself.
And unfortunately, I also believe, you run a great meeting, Mayor, and I don't want you to recuse yourself to the extent you're running the meeting, but if there is a tie vote and it would necessitate you voting, I believe that at that same meeting you indicated that you will ask that all applications be turned down and you indicated your predisposition before hearing the evidence that you wanted to vote against this. So, I would just ask that if your vote would ever be necessary in any element of these applications that you recuse yourself unless you're going to vote in favor.
Okay, your objection concerning the mayor's noted. I don't believe that matter is ripe at this point because we don't have a tie vote. I don't know how the vote's going to turn out by council, but at the appropriate time we'll address your comments.
Okay.
And the mayor can act accordingly. Okay, with that, you know how the motions, there is a motion that's going to be made on the floor. I agree that the appropriate time to make the motion procedurally is during the regular meeting, so we'll defer that motion until the regular meeting, which is going to occur very shortly.
And I would ask that that be made at the front because if it's voted on, we won't have to sit and wait to see if you act or not.
So, are you opposing us making that motion at this point, notwithstanding the procedural problem that this is not part of the regular meeting?
We would like to move forward with the project and I recognize that under the municipality's planning code, you have 45 days from the close of the hearing to render your decision. I will defer to your judgment in what you need to have by way of a sufficient timeframe to render the correct decision and I won't oppose or really consent to when you want to vote on the applications.
Fine, so we'll do it during the regular meeting. Okay, with that, the testimony's closed on this public hearing and you have, you've heard testimony. I assume there's no council questions or are there?
I have two.
Okay.
Can I?
Go ahead.
Has, I don't know if Mr. Shufau or anybody else knows, has there ever been an application to build on this property before and what was the outcome?
There was two applications submitted to the municipality. If memory serves me correctly, they were back in the early 90s, they, excuse me, the 80s, and they were both for rezoning for development of a nursing home and each one was denied.
You know why it was denied?
They requested rezoning for a nursing home.
Oh, for that, okay.
Yeah, so the rezoning was denied.
The other one I had is, was concerning the stormwater that runs down the hillside. She kind of explained it coming down, but I didn't understand where it goes to once it gets to the, maybe I should say past the temple site or even to the temple site. Where does the stormwater go then?
It ultimately ends up in Abers Creek.
Goes under Abers Creek Road?
It goes under Abers Creek Road through a piping system, onto their own property and discharges into Abers Creek itself.
Okay, and just to confirm, I heard somebody say it and then I think I heard somebody confirm it, that there's not going to be any explosives used on this site? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, did someone else have a question? Linda?
I do. You, Ms. Farck, you said that there was no traffic study required by PennDOT on Northern Pike. Is that correct?
Correct.
Is there, has Monrova requested one or are we allowed to request one?
There was a traffic study done when they initially submitted with their only access being Abers Creek Road for their expansion. We reviewed that traffic study and that was for a larger development than what is currently...
That was done on Abers Creek though, right?
That was done on Abers Creek, the traffic study. Now, the traffic study primarily looks at capacity and levels of service. With that study, one of our concerns was the existing Abers Creek driveway. Through the process, they come back with the other driveway and basically with reducing the development and splitting the traffic between the two driveways, there was no need for another study to look at capacity.
Who decided there was no need?
The municipality. I reviewed that based on the original study and the new plans.
You didn't feel there was a need for one on Northern Pike then?
Not a traffic study. Now, there is a need for a PennDOT Highway occupancy permit and part of that is a site distance review.
Which she had spoke about.
Yes, and a full review by PennDOT.
Okay. And you had mentioned a letter from PennDOT regarding the driveway and there were some issues that had to be addressed, but you never told us what the issues were.
Well, some of the issues were, for example, our baseline started at zero, baseline being the center line of the driveway is at zero, was starting at the edge pavement. They wanted us to start zero at the center line of Northern Pike. It was all mainly administrative and work that they wanted. One was, oh, it was just confirming profiles and things like that. Okay, thank you. Like asking for a letter acknowledging from Monrova Borough for the proposed development and decaying awareness of the HOP plan. It was just mainly, most of it was dealing with, oh, one was they had their old, we use, PennDOT has standard drawings for traffic control and we submitted as prior HOP plan, though they revised it since our supplemental and they want us to put in new, their new drawings for their traffic controls. It's those type of things.
Have you done them yet or?
No, we did not.
Okay. Okay, and then, that's all the questions I have for you. And I'm sorry, Dr. Alvey. The question I had for you is in regard to the retaining walls, during the installation of the retaining walls, what is the guarantee of the upper slope not taking, not sliding at all while they're being installed, during the installation process?
The method of how those walls are installed consists of that, a rig will come, drilling rig, and they will drill boreings maybe 10 feet apart roughly and they'll be like 24-inch diameter bore hole.
Okay.
And then they will lower in that a soldier beam.
Okay.
And they put concrete in the hole itself so the soldier beam is embedded in that one to provide you the, really the restraining force you need. And then they start cutting in front of the retaining wall, a couple feet each time and put down planks behind it. And they cut down another two feet, put planks behind it. So, this way you never have an exposed area which is really, it's not, the cut, when you say cut, it's not unsupported cut, the cut is always supported cut.
Okay.
So, there's already in place the restraining forces so you don't really let the material above slide down.
Okay, and the other question I had is the gentleman was concerned about the vibration of the big machinery on the existing hillside?
Absolutely nothing.
So, you don't feel there would be any?
There's no vibration to the houses.
Okay.
Because it's not driven piles, you're not going to drive anything. You're going to just drill a hole and put down the beams in it.
Okay, and you said that you would have devices in the hillside somewhere or somewhere that were, that would keep kind of like a record of what's going on so that if something would start to happen, you would kind of get an advance notice? Is that what you were saying?
No, 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 not in that case. No, we were going to put settlement monuments on the fill material.
Okay.
Any fill you got, 30, 40 foot fill, it always settles. So, we'll monitor the settlement of the fill so that it's mostly completed before we start any construction on the top of it.
I got you. Okay, thank you for your time.
Sure, thank you.
Anyone else?
I have one real quick question. If, just for the residents' sake, if, I'm sure you'll be bonded on this project throughout, if during the project or in the future, if there were to be a slide, would the church be responsible for that? To...
I want, I think you should ask your solicitor that, but what I will tell you is there's a developers' agreement that's required to be signed. That was a condition of the planning commission's recommendation. There are requirements in your standard developers' agreement, including posting of the bond, maintaining adequate insurance, being responsible for your negligent acts as the law provides anyway. So, to ask a general, would we be required? It would be dictated and predicated by the developers' agreement and the applicable law.
So, in a sense, if the residents were jeopardized on Burke Drive, it would be the responsibility to, whether it would take another retaining wall or whatever, to bring their property back?
I'm not going to stand here and tell you in a blanket statement that my client's going to bear financial responsibility for the neighbors until I know any specific facts associated with the problem. But I will tell you, our intent is not to cause any problems and we will be responsible for our actions.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Here, a couple questions about the driveway.
Tom, hang on a second. Steve, if you read the minutes from the planning commission, a question was asked and Mr. Dice's daughter answered it, difference of...
I have read the minutes, but I...
Yeah, there was a few different variables involved there, so I think if you read those minutes, I'll answer your question.
Which is all now part of the record and you can look at it for the next 30 days.
What is the width of the driveway?
The width of the driveways provides two-way traffic direction and it's about 22 feet wide.
Okay, okay, and what is the, what is the normal road, 20 feet approximately? Okay. Another question, what type of vehicles will be using this driveway?
The planned vehicles, of course, in the initial is to use it for construction as an access up to that, to that building so they can maintain services at their local, at their existing facility.
Once it's completed.
But once it's completed, it's mainly a bus for that four or five times during the year when they have a bus.
So, would you say personal vehicles, delivery vehicles?
Personal vehicles, delivery vehicles, fire trucks if need be and emergency vehicles.
Now, the buses that you're proposing to use that, what size, what's the length of those buses?
I'm not really sure.
Would they be like a regular school bus?
Are they regular school buses? Okay.
Okay, now, how about left turns? Out of that, into and out of that driveway?
Into and out of that driveway. Good question. Let me see if I can, okay, that's better, so it's, okay. Left turns, left turns into, okay. Great, see this right here, see if we can get a close-up. This is Abers Creek, close to, I mean, this is Northern Pike, but close to Abers Creek where Abers Creek's come in and I'm taking picture from the center line of this roadway. And right about in this location, right here, is that 300-foot distance and this is saying that we have a lot of distance, well, for those who are making left turns out, that if I'm driving here, I could see someone, a bus or somebody coming out and making that left turn out. So, as for traffic going up Northern Pike, you have enough visibility to see that left-hand turn or someone taking a left-hand turn.
How about, how about, what school buses, the length of the school bus, wouldn't that be a hazard to the folks coming down? You've got a, what's the school bus, 50 feet?
Right, if you're coming out, this is, this picture here, we're showing 300 feet right here. I'm 10 feet back, according to site distance, you have to be looking at 10 feet up, back, about three feet high, and we're taking a picture showing where 300 feet is and I have a person standing there with a rod, it's really hard to see, but that's why we have this indicated with the arrow. That's 300 feet. You could still see a little bit more past that and that's why we stay, we have 350.
Here's my issue with the left turns. I don't believe there should be any left turns, not coming up the hill or going out of the hill. Everything should be a right turn, number one. The issue I have is if you stand in that spot, which I have done, and I was with Ralph and Bob and Stan, and as the vehicles are coming down from Turnpike Garden entrance, the speed limit I think is 35, however, they don't pay attention to the 35. They're coming down at a much faster speed. They're either texting, they're talking on the telephone, smoking a cigarette or yelling at the kids. And I believe that a left turn there would be very dangerous for the folks coming down the road and the folks making the left turn and also the left turn coming up, folks coming down, they don't, they don't see that. All of a sudden, they see it, they jump on the brakes and that's a big issue as far as I'm concerned.
Okay.
Okay, now I have a couple more questions. Drainage from the driveway. Now, we all know that drainage on a surface like that is greater than if it would be coming out of the trees and so forth. Now, where does that drainage go?
Okay, let me pull that up for you.
Let me, if I may, the pictures that you just showed, were they already part of the record? Have they been previously submitted to the municipality?
No.
Then I'd like to mark those, please, as exhibits. I don't need...
How many are there?
There's, well, you don't really need this one, but you, this one's a good one.
Just tell me how many there are.
I think there is three or four.
Pick another.
There's, there's four that I would, I would submit.
Set those aside, would you please? Just set those four aside.
Okay.
Okay, with the other ones away.
All right.
Now, those are the ones that Mr. A. wants put on the record, is that right?
Please, yes, we can mark those as exhibits.
Okay, so noted.
Thank you. Would you like me to repeat the question?
Yeah, the question was drainage and where is it going?
You're not going to look at the pictures now?
Sure, already did.
I know, what, I'm confused.
Oh, the pictures we're dealing with is site distance.
Okay.
And now we're addressing the question about...
Okay, drainage.
Drainage, okay.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, good.
Sorry, this, it's, I'm like, drawings are all over the place. Okay.
You can explain it to me if you wish, rather than...
Excuse me?
You can explain it rather than go through your...
Okay, well, I mean, mainly, everything's heading down to Abers Creek as it is. This location here, we're putting this pond here, we also have a trench, a rock trench that where the, if the water's coming off this driveway is going into a rock trench. The rock trench...
Will the driveway be crowned or the...
Well, it's sort of super elevated so that it's not, it's not crowned, it's mainly trying to go into the hillside and not going off the hillside. So, we want the water to be directed to, into the hillside, that's why we have this rock trench. Right above the rock trench, we have diversion channels that are bringing water from this upper area, this huge upper area into this pond. This pond, the rock trench discharges and the pond discharges into this rock drain that comes down the hillside here.
What size pipe out of the pond?
Out of the pond is a, I believe it's a 15-inch pipe, I can look at the drawings, but it's a 15-inch pipe, however, the discharge on the riser is only like a three-inch hole. It's, there's a, there's a grate above for the higher flow values, but it's...
I understand what the retention pond's for. Oh, is the 15-inch too large? Come out of there, that seems...
15 inches is the size required by the municipal ordinance, the minimum size required.
So, we had other issues and we were going to use a 6-inch pipe at one point.
You're looking at apples and oranges. This is a different type of design.
Okay, thank you. I have two more questions.
Okay.
We all know that there's an issue with drainage onto Northern Pike and it creates a dangerous situation in the wintertime and we would, we really need to address that.
Well, one way to, that we address the, is that here is this drainage area that's coming down to that driveway, to Northern Pike, that our clients, it's part of their property that's being developed. What we're proposing is this diversion channel, okay? So, we're taking part, most of that area away from Northern Pike and we're putting it, this diversion channel and we're, we are controlling it in this big pond here and then it goes down Abers Creek. The fact that we're controlling it into that...
So, it goes from Northern Pike, basically, down this way to Abers Creek?
Yes, but through that pond.
No, actually, no, she didn't say it flows down Northern Pike. As she described in the plan...
I'm sorry, I didn't mean Northern Pike, but I'm saying from that point, it goes from that point, point A to point B.
It goes from the pond through this, under a pipe under the driveway, over stone...
Okay.
...to a piping system that takes it to a discharge point on the applicant's property and then it puts it into Abers Creek.
Okay, now, what size is that pipe?
This pipe is, the pipe along Abers Creek is 15-inch for the most part.
Is that adequate? Should it be 18 or 24?
Well, there were some areas where I think in the profile that we may have made it 24, I would have to double-check. I have the calculations and the profiles that were submitted as part of the package, but we did the capacity for that.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Just a couple quick ones.
And I think this is for Mark, so just want to make sure we're dotting our i's, crossing our t's here, because both the S. concerns in the R2 zoning that allows the church, school, you know, does that also permit the gazebo's?
Yeah, they're accessory structures.
Accessory structures, and then the amenities are those?
The amenities are usually your parking areas...
Side amenities are usually your parking areas, handicap parking walls, things like that.
Yes, we just know what they are.
Yeah.
Okay. And then, my other question again was about the equipment getting in to the construction site, because all around the site was where the steep grades were, correct? And the existing.
Right.
The new driveways being built to access that, so how is the equipment going to get there on the existing driveway, given the slopes getting to the construction site?
If contractor would be the best person to answer that question. I mean, there's different ways, if I was a contractor, there's different ways that we can provide scenarios. They do have an existing driveway here, what they could do is install these culverts first, and then provide access right through here, because that's not really that steep, and provide access through the woods here, and then get down to this location, or they can access it from this, from Northern Pike.
And that'll probably be, and Mark could probably, Mr. Shufa can confirm that, during the building permit application phase, I would suspect that would be a legitimate question and concern that any contractor would have to address and satisfy to the municipality's comfort.
Martha, they're going to.
I do have one more question.
Sorry.
Since you're.
I just want to hear.
Martha, they're going to probably remove excess, what, at 10,000 cubic yards off-site?
Well, what, right now, it's proposed 16,000 a cut, about, um, what was it, eight, 7,000 or 6,000 in fill, so part of that cut is going to be used for the fill.
Right.
And there will be excess, so it'd be about 10,000 excess.
Okay, so to haul that material off-site, they will have to construct a construction entrance, as per municipal codes and ordinances, to get that soil off that site to another location.
Was it appropriate to know that now? Or is that?
Well, I think once, once Pendott issues the HOP, if they're successful in getting that HOP, and that's where your temporary construction access is probably going to come out, for them to take the soil off-site.
Got you. And I actually just had one more question, and I apologize, I almost forgot.
Rather see it come out of there, Paul, than down that steep hill on Abers Creek.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Absolutely. And I think the only other thing you said you were waiting for was approvals from the Conservation District? What, what are those? What approvals are we waiting?
That's for E and S plan, you could, Martha, can.
Uh, for, um, DEP, and they let the Conservation Districts be the, are they authorized the jur, uh, conservation, jurisdiction to the Conservation Districts for their National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permits for construction activities? That is a permit that says you have your best management practices in place to prevent sedimentation or accelerate erosion coming off of your site, and that, we did prepare our erosion-sementage control plan and our stormwater management plan, force them to the Conservation District to go with that permit, and that is the permit that we were talking about.
Thank you very much.
So you know, those, those permits follow only after there's an approval by conditional use and, and you're further down in the permitting process. You wouldn't see that yet.
Okay, very good.
I'm, I'm, sorry.
My question is, that, when, during construction, I understand your project is projected to go five years, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Now, the proposed driveway, at some point, until that pond is constructed and the rock sides are constructed, there could be drainage coming out onto Northern Pike. While it's, well, during the construction part, as they, as they're trying to cut the road or however they're going to go in there, perhaps that might even be the construction entrance site at some point.
I just want, again, I don't mean to interrupt, but those are the kinds of things that are, are dealt with only after there's approvals by you. Those are the kinds of things as you, you see during the construction phases, where if that was to happen, we would be out there indicating, you've got to do something about that, that would have to be corrected.
Well, I understand I have to be corrected, but do they have a plan in place today?
Well, we have, we have a sump that we were proposing, sort of right, right that location, right the driveway, so, and then, like I said, our proposed grade, and they're going to have to cut this back, is one of our first initial moves, cut this back away from Northern Pike, and then provide that low point along with that culvert, but we have to, we have to protect that stream too. So we're proposing to put a culvert in there, have a check dam, rock check dam for sediment controls, have a sump location, and it will take care of, for the most part, the smaller stormy events. I mean, during construction, you usually have, you know, some different events that you don't, aren't more.
That will be addressed fully at time of construction.
There's a normal drainage issue there.
Yeah, it's a normal construction drainage issue that will be addressed, uh, once approval is provided.
Right, and we do have plans, we do have some things in place, like a sump and our culvert, and grading the, the road back, to address that.
They don't, part of their application, they do have a construction sequence that lists concurrently how they're going to construct the facility.
Can I ask two more quick questions? Because there aren't going to be any signage on Northern Pike letting anybody know that there isn't a driveway there.
At this time, there were no plans, except for the typical traffic controls during construction. That's something we can see with Pendott to see if there's something we can do about it.
I mean, just to alert a driver, you know, coming up or going, especially going down.
That there's a new driveway.
That there's a new driveway there, because that's going to be very foreign to a lot of people that, you know, that that's there, if they're not aware of what's going on. Um, that's the one, and.
Again, Linda, just so you know, those are the kinds of things that you're going to see as this project progresses, if there's approval, because Pendott can, can act.
I, I, I know she had talked about signage, but I didn't hear if there was any require, okay, the other thing, Mark, have they looked into with the water running and going to be flowing into Abers Creek, the possibility of flooding of Abers Creek itself, and their homeowners down there?
Yes, they have.
Okay.
In, Bruce, I, Linda, if you are requesting signage, in the resolution, there are conditions that administratively, we have attached to this, these applications.
Okay.
If you're requesting signage, you can modify or add to those conditions, and we can bring that suggestion to Pendott.
That's, it's subject, it's a state road, and we subject the Pendott's final approval.
But if that's a recommendation for a condition, you can add it on it.
Okay.
We're going to have to adhere to what Pendott requires anyway to get the HOP, and there'll be a whole thorough.
Well, maybe Pendott didn't think, wouldn't think about it, but it's, I thought about it, that's why I asked.
They'll think about it.
Okay.
They'll think about 10 other things, and many of them we won't like, but we'll have to deal with.
Okay, any other questions by council? Seeing none. The testimony then is closed tonight, and we'll take up the issue of what you want to do during the regular meeting. There's also another conditional use application, I believe, correct? Two more?
Yeah.
What's the first one? We're going to follow the same format.
Okay, the second application, which council has to take action tonight, is to accept the withdrawal of Application 14-3C, Dale Shirley.
It'll be during the public hearing, or meeting, rather.
Right. So, you want me to read that into the record?
We'll do it during the meeting.
Okay, very good. And then the other two up, and the other applicant has a site plan and conditional use application.
Who is that?
That is RT LLC Meadows Original Frozen Custard.
Okay, do you want to give us a brief statement of, of what it is that the conditional use is about?
Okay, uh, the site plan.
Let me start out by saying, this is the date and time set for the public hearing concerning the custard stand. Is there anybody here for the custard stand?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, you want to, anybody that intends to testify concerning the custard stand, can you raise your right hand and be sworn? You swear to tell the tru, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God. Okay, go ahead, Mark.
Okay, there are two applications, 14-6ST.
Hang on, if anybody would like to leave, that's, you know.
Stand, we haven't acted on this.
We'll, we'll give you a couple of minutes. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't hear any more noise, go ahead.
Okay, the next application is Applications 14-6ST and 14-4C RT LLC Meadows Original Frozen Custard. Applicant is requesting site plan and conditional use approval to renovate an existing 100, 1,110-square-foot building for a drive-through restaurant and associated site amenities. This property is located at 4329 Northern Pike in the C2 Business Commercial Zoning District. Planning Commission recommends approval.
Is there anything special about this project that we should know about?
Nothing special, it meets all the zoning codes and ordinances.
Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Okay, you want to state, who's going to, who's going to start talking?
I am.
All right.
State your name for the.
My name's Ray Guste, from Dr. and Party, Ray.
Can you come up to the microphone?
Pick a microphone.
Yeah.
Who are you here with?
Rob Clark is the applicant, the owner and applicant.
Okay. Ray, you going to put it on?
Yes. Um, as Mark said, the, the site is located at 4329 Northern Pike, it's right next to the Oral Funeral Home, which is on the right-hand side or east side of the, of the site. Uh, Mr. Clark is proposing to renovate the existing building, both the interior and exterior, for a frozen custard. Uh, he's also looking to add a, a drive-through window on the west side and a, and a drive-through lane. Uh, he also plans on doing some improvements to the parking area, some paving, some, some ceiling of the remaining lot, adding lighting, signage, and some landscaping. Also have some building elevations. Uh, again, that'll be, the exterior will be refinished. Uh, this side is, the, the west side will have, where the drive-through window is, will have either cement board panels or maybe an epist finish to it, it'll depend on the final cost, but.
It's just, not to date ourselves, but this was the old Charade Lounge?
Well, it is correct. It is. I'm from here, I mean, it is the old Charade, I used to go in there, I know it well.
Really?
Yeah, really.
Okay. Does the applicant have anything further they want to state?
Uh, I don't, I don't think so.
Well, in that case, I'd like to step up for you guys and make a motion that we approve.
Well, we can't do that into the regular meeting.
I thought this was the regular meeting.
Nope, we have to wait, just like we're waiting on them. That's all right, you're, you're, you're well-intended. Um, does, or any residents want to speak to this application, any interested parties? Seeing none, the testimony is closed on this matter, unless council has any questions. Does councilman, any of the council people have any questions? Seeing none. This conditional use, use hearing is over. That's it for the conditional uses for tonight?
Yes, sir, yes.
Okay, now you can start your regular meeting.
Okay, council, looking at the minutes of Citizens Night Meeting of September 4th, 2014, and I do, do not.
No, that's the only one.
Those are the two are not ready yet, that's what I thought.
Yeah, they only have Citizens Night.
Any corrections or additions on the September 4th meeting of 2014 to Citizens Seeing none, motion on the floor.
Motion to approve. Second.
Roll call Sharon, please.
Mrs. Gatos?
Aye.
Dr. Gresok?
Aye.
Mr. Harvey?
Aye.
Mr. Johns?
Aye.
Mr. Clary?
Aye.
Mr. Duncan?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Over, approval of our reports of our tax collections, any additions or corrections, council? Seeing none, is there a motion on the?
No move. Second.
Roll call Sharon, please.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Duncan?
Aye.
Mr. Clary?
Aye.
Mr. Johns?
Aye.
Mr. Harvey?
Aye.
Mr. Dr. Gresok?
Aye.
Mrs. Gatos?
Aye.
Over to the payroll report, once again, council, any additions or corrections? Seeing none, motion on the floor.
Motion made.
Second.
Roll call Sharon, please.
Mrs. Gatos?
Aye.
Dr. Gresok?
Aye.
Mr. Harvey?
Aye.
Mr. Johns?
Aye.
Mr. Clary?
Aye.
Mr. Duncan?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
And on list of bills of budget transfers, once again, council, any additions or corrections?
Seeing none, motion on the floor.
Motion.
No move. Second.
And there's a second roll call, Sharon, please.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Duncan?
Aye.
Mr. Clary?
Aye.
Mr. Johns?
Aye.
Mr. Harvey?
Aye.
Dr. Gresok?
Aye.
Mrs. Gatos?
Aye.
Council, are there any nominations or appointments for the vacancies on our boards, commissions, and authorities? Seeing none, we'll move over to bids and proposals, and Mr. Little, if you would.
Yes, a, a motion to award the Old Ramsey Road Repair Project to J&amp;G Contracting of Carnegie, PA, for $417,600.
Motion to.
This was discussed Thursday, is there a motion on, or any questions, I should say? Motion on the floor.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call Sharon, please.
Mrs. Gatos?
Aye.
Dr. Gresok?
Aye.
Mr. Harvey?
Aye.
Mr. Johns?
Aye.
Mr. Clary?
Aye.
Mr. Duncan?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Moving over to the old business, Mr. Little, if you would, please.
Okay, um, Mr. Dice, do we want to do these together or individually?
Well, I think, I think it, now's the appropriate time to take up whether or not council wants to address any of these applications tonight, or defer to the next council meeting on acting on these matters.
Mr. Dice, I'd like to make a motion to table all of the items and take advantage, all the items related to the temple, and take advantage of the time to, to analyze the information that we received tonight.
I would like to second that.
Okay, there's no discussion on the table, but I will say to you, you must act within 45 days on the conditional uses.
Roll call Sharon, please.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Duncan?
Aye.
Mr. Clary?
Aye.
Mr. Johns?
Mr. Johns is abstained, he's, he's recused himself.
He's recused himself, okay, I'm sorry. Mr. Harvey?
Aye.
Dr. Gresok?
Aye.
Mrs. Gatos?
Aye.
Mr. Little, we'll move over to new business, please.
Uh, new business, the first application is BBH Associates LP for a subdivision approval. Uh, the motion is requested.
Motion on the floor.
Wait a minute, I'm.
Second.
Do you approve?
This is the.
No, go ahead, Ron.
I just had a question on the, on the, all the, Mr. Shufa said on the one that was withdrawn, did we have to act on that separately, or?
That's coming up, yes.
Yeah, it'll be a coming up.
Okay, okay, I apologize.
Okay, there was a motion, is there a second?
Yes, Mr. Wilson.
Uh, Ron, did you make the motion? I didn't, I thought you had.
I did not.
Well, I thought, I'm sorry, I thought Mr. Harvey made the motion.
No move. Second.
Roll call Sharon, please.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Duncan?
Aye.
Mr. Clary?
Aye.
Mr. Johns?
Aye.
Mr. Harvey?
Aye.
Dr. Greasock?
Aye.
Mrs. Gatos?
Aye.
Okay, item number two is the BBH Associates to erect, it's a site plan approval to construct 9,200 square feet. It's a family dollar store.
Motion on the floor.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call Sharon, please.
Mrs. Gatos?
Aye.
Dr. Greasock?
Aye.
Mr. Harvey?
Aye.
Mr. Johns?
Aye.
Mr. Clary?
Aye.
Mr. Duncan?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Little.
Okay, number three is for the same application subdivision. It's a sidewalk modification to the subdivision and land development ordinance.
Motion on the floor.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call Sharon, please.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Duncan?
Aye.
Mr. Clary?
Aye.
Mr. Johns?
Aye.
Mr. Harvey?
Aye.
Dr. Greasock?
Aye.
Mrs. Gatos?
Aye.
Mr. Little.
Item number four is applicant, applicant is requesting site plan approval to construct 15,622 square feet Subaru service building. That's for number one, Caughlin Pontiac on William Penn Highway.
Motion on the floor.
Don't move.
Is there a second? Any questions or discussion? Roll call Sharon, please.
Mrs. Gatos?
Aye.
Dr. Greasock?
Aye.
Mr. Harvey?
Aye.
Mr. Johns?
Aye.
Mr. Clary?
Aye.
Mr. Duncan?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Little.
Okay, items number five and six are the applicant has requested withdrawal application. It's Mr. Dale Shirley for site plan approval to construct 7,700 square foot motorcycle service building and also the conditional use that is associated with that application.
Motion on the floor.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Roll call Sharon, please.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Duncan?
Aye.
Mr. Clary?
Aye.
Mr. Johns?
Aye.
Mr. Harvey?
Aye.
Dr. Greasock?
Aye.
Mrs. Gatos?
Aye.
Mr. Little.
Okay, item number seven is the R T L L C applicant requesting site plan approval to renovate existing 1,110 square foot building, drive-through restaurant.
Motion on the floor.
I'd like to make a motion this time in the meeting that we approve.
Second.
Roll call Sharon, please.
Mrs. Gatos?
Aye.
Dr. Greasock?
Aye.
Mr. Harvey?
Aye.
Mr. Johns?
Aye.
Mr. Clary?
Aye.
Mr. Duncan?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Little.
Okay, item is eight is the conditional use approval for the same application, R T L L C, um, for the 1,110 foot square foot building.
Motion on the floor.
Once again, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call Sharon, please.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Duncan?
Aye.
Mr. Clary?
Aye.
Mr. Johns?
Aye.
Mr. Harvey?
Aye.
Dr. Greasock?
Aye.
Mrs. Gatos?
Aye.
Mr. Harvey?
Aye.
Mr. Johns?
Aye.
Mr. Clary?
Aye.
Mr. Duncan?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Harvey?
Aye.
Dr. Greasock?
Aye.
Mr. Harvey?
Aye.
Dr. Greasock?
Aye.
Mr. Harvey?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Clary?
Aye.
Mr. Duncan?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Okay. Now to the motions. Now to the motions, Mr. Little, please.
Okay, um. Okay, a motion to appoint Campbell, Duran, Beatty, Palumbo, and Miller as arbitration counsel for police contract negotiations.
Before I request for a motion, I just want everybody to know in our listening audience and for those sitting here, if you watched last Thursday at our Citizens Night work session, we did discuss every one of these issues at fairly large length, so motion on the floor.
Motion to appoint them as counsel for the police negotiations.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call Sharon, please.
Mrs. Gatos?
Aye.
Dr. Greasock?
Aye.
Mr. Harvey?
Aye.
Mr. Johns?
Aye.
Mr. Clary?
Aye.
Mr. Duncan?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
A motion to place a quarter page advertisement in the amount of $75 in the 2014-15 year book of the Gateway Hockey Club.
Question. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I thought we raised that to 100.
That's true. You're right, 100.
And Mr. Wilson suggested that at last, on Thursday's meeting to.
Yeah, I had that same time.
Take it to $100, which was a, is that a full page, Mr. Wilson? Full page ad?
Yes. Thank you.
A half page. $100 is a half page?
I'm making a motion to. Was $100, $100 is a larger ad? How about?
Yeah, it's large.
Yeah.
Is there a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call Sharon, please.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Dr. Greasock?
Aye.
I'm sorry. Mr. Duncan?
Aye.
Call my name, I'll say yes.
Everybody's asleep in the switch up here.
She wouldn't sleep.
Mr. Clary?
Aye.
Mr. Johns?
Aye.
Mr. Harvey?
Aye.
Dr. Greasock?
Aye.
Mr. Harvey?
Aye.
Dr. Greasock?
Aye.
Mrs. Gatos?
Aye.
Sharon has the.
We need a break. We take a break.
Do you need a break, Sharon?
Honestly, no, I don't need a break. Thank you.
Mr. Little.
A motion to approve the R B A delinquent tax professional data system software in the amount of $30,125.
Motion on the floor.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call Sharon.
Mrs. Gatos?
Aye.
Dr. Greasock?
Aye.
Mr. Harvey?
Aye.
Mr. Johns?
Aye.
Mr. Clary?
Aye.
Mr. Duncan?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
A motion to authorize to advertise an R F P for bank depository.
Motion on the floor.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call Sharon, please.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Duncan?
Aye.
Mr. Clary?
Aye.
Mr. Johns?
Aye.
Mr. Harvey?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Clary?
Aye.
Mr. Duncan?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
A motion for the Civil Service Commission to begin the process of promotional testing of lieutenant and sergeant, and sergeant, that should say, positions in there during the last quarter of 2014.
Motion on the floor.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call Sharon, please.
Mrs. Gatos?
Aye.
Dr. Greasock?
Aye.
Mr. Harvey?
Aye.
Mr. Johns?
Aye.
Mr. Clary?
Aye.
Mr. Duncan?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
A motion to open pligot accounts for the capital improvement program and the vehicle lease escrow account.
Motion on the floor, counsel.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call Sharon, please.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Duncan?
Aye.
Mr. Clary?
Aye.
Mr. Johns?
Aye.
We're having a hard time tonight.
Mr. Harvey?
Aye.
Dr. Greasock?
Aye.
Mrs. Gatos?
Aye.
I apologize, ladies and gentlemen.
What's going on down there?
I have no idea. Next.
A motion to approve the Gateway School District Memorandum of Understanding Regarding Reciprocation of Services for Road Salt and the Use of the School District Facilities.
Motion on the floor.
How should you approve?
A question on the motion.
Well, there's a motion and we got a second.
Steve's going to ask the same thing, so I'll let him go.
Well, I need a second first.
Second.
Okay, questions on the motion?
I just want to clarify, this is for salt only, correct?
Yes.
Not for service.
Not for services. Very good.
I should say, not to mine, I'll know it's for salt.
There was a little bit of a misunderstanding before, and so it's salt only. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call Sharon, please.
Mrs. Gatos?
Aye.
Dr. Greasock?
Aye.
Mr. Harvey?
Aye.
Mr. Johns?
Aye.
Mr. Clary?
Aye.
Mr. Duncan?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
And moving over to resolutions, once again, Mr. Little.
A resolution authorizing the distribution of the general municipal pension system aid pursuant to Municipal Pension Plan Act 205 of 1984.
Motion on the floor.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? Roll call Sharon, please.
Mrs. Gatos?
Aye.
Dr. Greasock?
Aye.
Mr. Harvey?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Clary?
Aye.
Mr. Duncan?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
The last ordinance is an ordinance accepting the dedication to public use a certain roadway known as Red Oak Court, together with the requisite storm sewers located within the street right-of-way as more fully set forth on a drawing attached here too and made part of this ordinance.
I would like to make the motion to approve this, please.
Second.
Roll, questions or comments? Roll call Sharon, please.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Duncan?
Aye.
Mr. Clary?
Aye.
Mr. John?
Aye.
Mr. Harvey?
Aye.
Dr. Greasock?
Aye.
Mrs. Gatos?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move over to reports of our, thank you, Mr. Dice, uh, reports of our municipal staff and Bruce, any other work?
Nothing else, no.
Mr. Little.
Use the fund balance in order to balance the budget. As I said, when we passed the late budget back in March, we were not going to use any of the fund balance for 2014, and we have it, and that's the first time in 10 years that that has occurred. And that is obviously because of the tax increase that we implemented, the council passed back at the March council meeting. Because of using the fund balance through the years, Moody Investors, as I reported last March, downgraded our bond rating from AA2 to AA3. However, on a bright note, Standard &amp; Poor's has kept us stable at AA-stable, their stipulation, because we have raised taxes and we don't have plans to take money out of the fund balance into the future. But obviously, that doesn't mean that it may not happen. Also, it has to be noted that pension obligations beginning in 2015, which is the 2014 budget, is that the liability for our pension, and this is for all the municipalities across the country, will now have to go on to the balance sheets of municipalities. And what that means, if most municipalities have a liability with pensions, that's going to produce a bigger liability on the balance sheet, which means bond ratings will either probably shift down. And this is going to happen to every city, every municipality, in the Commonwealth and then across the country. And this pronouncement comes from its GASB number 67 and 68. GASB is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, which is based in Washington, DC. This is very similar to the ERISA laws that were passed in 1974 with private companies, hence the spawning of the 401K that happened in the late 70s and early 80s. Now, whether that happens with municipalities remains to be seen. On page four, the budget message that I've given to council is a breakdown of the revenue discussion, and it indicates our revenues that we'll be taking in. And once again, the one mil real estate tax will bring in approximately $2,389,470 in revenue. At the bottom of the page there, our assessment as of September 19th is $2,389,470, which is slightly about $250,000 above what was reported back in January of this year. Real estate tax proposal, there will be no, at least no proposed from me, real estate tax increase. That will remain at four mils. And so we've had a tax increase back in March, and it's going to remain that way. We're estimating to bring in 6.84 million in wage tax, delinquent business privilege tax, the software that you just approved of NITE RBA, that will benefit the delinquent collections for business privilege and mercantile tax. And it's estimated, just for the delinquencies, that Mr. Folkerson, our tax collectors, we're going to be taking an additional $136,000 in that. That's just the delinquents alone. Now, as far as the general fund reserve, as I mentioned, we're going to be incurring a fund balance at the end of this year, and that's kind of the first time that we've had a little bit of a surplus, and that's obviously because of the tax increase. It isn't any kind of smoke and mirrors, it's because of the tax increase. Next year, we're planning to, we're estimating for 15 to use a little bit of that, that fund balance of $270,000 of what were the surplus we have coming in there, and that's outlined in the fund balance analysis at the end of my budget message. Okay, on to the expenditure discussion. I am proposing certain new expenditures that I think need, are needed in the municipality and why the 6% increase in the budget. The Monroeville code, our code has not been updated since 2006. We pass ordinances and they do not, are not codified in the code. The general code publishers from Rochester, New York, who we contract with, they put it on the website, but we do not have a code book that's updated. This was started in 2010, when I first got here, we had a change. We had a change, obviously, as everybody knows, a change in regime and managers, and it has stalled. And this is at a cost of approximately $18,200. Summer parks program, there is no money budgeted in this, but I've put this in my budget message because I know there has been discussions about this by certain council members up here on the dais. And if council wants to add to this, that's going to have to be put into the budget. As I said, this is a fluid document. The budget isn't final until it is adopted, and hopefully it'll be adopted at the December council meeting. Health benefit premiums, as council knows, our health benefits have gone up 27% beginning June 1st. We're on a fiscal year with respect to our health benefits, but we have changed it to a calendar year to make it commensurate with our budget process. So this is going to be for 18 months that we're going to be on this, but it's increasing 27%, and that is huge, to say the least. That's going to equate to approximately an additional $325,000 because of the increase in health benefits. Now, with that being said, we're having another open enrollment period, as we did in May. We're having another one in December because we'd like to see employees move to the community blue plan, which only went up 10%. Employees are contributing 7, 8, and 10% respectively to the healthcare plan, so if they move to that, then their contributions will go up less if they move to that because depending on what happens with UPMC and Highmark, if they go to a community blue, or if they stay on the PPO, it's going to be a de facto community blue plan because they will not be able to access UPMC facilities. So to us, staff, it seems it behooves them to move to that. Okay? But that's their contractual, one of the collective bargaining agreements. We can't force them to go because it's in a collective bargaining agreement. The next item is a public works heavy mechanic foreman, which I believe is needed in the public works department. The public works department has seen a reduction in positions over the last 12 years, which I outlined back in March, and one of them was an early retiree that took advantage of the retirement in 2010. He left, the position has not been replaced. I believe we need this, and with salary, with benefits, and these are just approximation, it'd be about $90,000. Also, an engineering inspector position in engineering and planning department. We need a position, so it's done by a less skilled employee, so the employee that we have that has his, he is an EIT, that has his engineering degree, that he can go out and he can do more important items, and this will hopefully reduce our cost for our contracted out engineer with Chester Engineers. And that's the game plan here, to reduce costs with Chester so our engineer on staff can go out and do the things that they would do. The next item is the comprehensive plan, which Mr. Shufa was talking about during the public hearing with the temple. The comprehensive plan has not been updated since 2005. Usually for a municipality this size, if you're going to do a complete revision, I'm guesstimating between $125,000, $150,000. However, I think this should be a phased approach, and at least it should be started in 2015, because if you let it languish, the more expensive it gets, and if the more out of date it is, the more Mr. Shufa, we cannot refer to that document, even though it's not a legal document, we cannot refer to that document because if it's 20 or 25 years out of date, the less credence it has in public hearings, just as the one we had here tonight. Okay, road salt. As a lot of people may know, road salt has gone up tremendously with Sheik Hawk, South Hills Council of Governments. Ours has gone up 37.8%. We've gone from $57.52 per ton to $79.29 per ton. That's going to equate to approximately $174,000 if we have a bad winter. Nobody knows what kind of a winter we're going to have, but this is the worst-case scenario right here. Okay, capital expense, the CIP program. As council knows, and as I mentioned back in March, when the 14 budget was passed, we are basically at our maximum as far as floating bonds with respect to debt service. We're paying about 11% of our debt service, 12% of our debt service, that of the general fund. So we've adopted the philosophy of transferring a million dollars in all capital improvement program, which we just passed this evening for that account to be opened. And part of the projects that are going to be paid out of that are listed in the budget message, which the 2015 road paving program, approximately $250,000, Old Ramsey Road, which we just mentioned tonight, which was awarded, and also the vehicle leasing, which we approved last month for the fire trucks, two fire trucks, four police vehicles, and four public works vehicles. It must be noted, I have written here in the budget message, it must be noted that the CIP won't carry a carryover of funds from 2014 to 15 because we have a million dollars for 14, and we're paying for the road program right now, but the Ramsey Road project most likely is not going to be finished, or we will not incur all the invoices until 2015. So there will be a carryover there. Okay, obvious, and the next item is the OPEB. We're supposed to be putting $2.2 million into the OPEB fund, which we cannot afford to do. However, as we laid out the game plan in March, we're going to put a million dollars into that, and that comes from the tax increase. We're going to put a million dollars of that into that each year as we can. But the way we're going to do this is we're going to put a million dollars in there at the end of the second quarter every year around July 1st, because that's when we have the majority of the tax, my real estate tax money in. And then what we're going to do is the OPEB fund will replenish the general fund on a quarterly basis, because we don't want to do that in one fell swoop in December because of the stock market is down, because we have that money invested. If the stock market is down in December and we pull that money out, we don't want to pull it out when the stock market is in a trough, like right now, as currently as we sit here. So that's basically the game plan there. The last item there is the MMO, Minimum Municipal Obligation Payment, which goes to the pension plans, $2.4 million approximately for the police and $1.173 million for the non-uniform. And council can look at the general fund balance analysis that I have on the last page there. Now, we have attacked this, the problem, I wouldn't call it a problem, but the issue of constantly taking money out of the fund balance, and hopefully we've attacked that, at least on the revenue end, and we did that through a tax increase. Now's the time to start attacking this on an expense end of it. And that's what we're doing right now, because we're in contract negotiations with CBA, with the several unions right now, and what we have to do is attack this on the expense side and try to trim expenses as much as we can in the municipality. Now, with that being said, the last thing I want to say is I just want to thank the entire staff for putting the document together, Mr. Lally and everybody else, all the department heads. There's still a lot of work to be, still a lot of work to be done with respect to moving ahead into the year 15 and 16 with getting things on firmer financial control in the municipality. We're heading in the right direction, hopefully in any event, but we still have a lot of work to do. Now, if anybody has any questions on a broad basis, you can ask me those questions now, but we'll get into more specifics as the department heads will be here for the public hearings on the 29th and also at the work session on the November the 7th. Five minutes?
Yeah.
Pretty good.
You went over.
Yeah.
All righty, moving over to the municipal engineer. Paul, any other wisdoms? Sean, any other from finance? Okay. We'll open up to any public comments on any municipal items to any residents who would like to address council. Seeing none, we'll close that proportion of the meeting, and Tom will start off with you.
I don't have anything tonight, thank you.
Very good. Steve?
Yeah, I'd just like to give my condolences to the Pat Folkerson family on the passing of his mother, and that's all I have tonight.
Paul?
All right, I've got a quick update from the senior center, the now accepting Silver and FIT memberships in addition to the Silver Sneakers members. The program in Silver Sneakers is available to Medicare-eligible adults with supplemental insurance that participate in the programs. If you don't know if you're eligible, you can contact the center. They're at 856-7825. Silver Sneakers accepts a variety of Highmark insurance plans. Silver FIT accepts Health American Aetna, and it will be accepting a variety of UPMC insurances starting in January of 2015. You can receive a free membership to the facility and free fitness classes. They're offered daily at the center. Most important, the center received close to $15,000 in 2013, which offset the municipal operational budget for the center. The additional revenue received by adding this program will also go towards those funds. So please go out and utilize those services. I know it's been a long night, guys. I have a great story to tell, just real quick. There was a gentleman, he was a resident of Monroeville, and another resident found him on the side of the road. He was lost, he was confused. It ended up, he was a retired from the Navy, and the gentleman that picked him up was also retired from the Navy. But the gentleman, Northern Pike, made me think about it. He was down on Northern Pike and he was lost. But this resident, Eric Petrus, who lives down the street from me, who's new to the town, he did find the guy and they did find his way home, and I wanted to thank the police department. They responded to the call very quickly, and we got the resident back to his house safe and sound. That's all I have tonight.
Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir. Two quick things. In my two years, 10 months, 14 days, 22 hours, and 18 minutes of being a council person, this has definitely been my most interesting meeting. On a lighter note, something I'd be serious about. Got an email from Pendott Northern Pike. It's going to be in the paper, it'll be in the Times Express. They are going to close Northern Pike Hill October 20th, which is next Monday. They claim they're going to have it shut down for seven working days. They're going to redo the stormwater sores, mill it and reasphalt it from Abers Creek up to Maria Lane, I believe.
They already posted it today?
There you go, good. So that's going to be done with that. That's all I have.
Mr. Harvey?
I told you at the last meeting, I didn't think I was going to make it through my daughter's wedding, but here I am. So survive that. Congratulations to my daughter and her new husband, Jason. Some of this is a little bit repeating because I want to make sure the residents that didn't see the last meeting, I heard on this. I did a short report on the Home Rule Charter Committee that I had talked to, the manager of Mount Lebanon, Mr. Stephen Feller. He provided us with a lot of information that their committee was working on to modify their Home Rule Charter. I have since passed that on to Mr. Greysaw. Metadale Plan had a large amount of water coming down through the back hillsides. I've got that turned in. We're going to investigate that, have not forgot it. Collingwood Drive, thanks to the Public Works Department, Mike Adams, they got those ruts fixed out there. And, by the way, well, before I turn the page, does anybody know what's going on with the school district and the land bank? Are we going to make a report on that?
I do believe they'll be voting on that at their next meeting.
Okay. I was just curious, because I didn't know either. John Eagle, workers in progress. If you didn't see the last meeting, they had a broken water line, so they had to defer their manpower to that until they got it fixed. Now they're back on the sewer line. My condolences also to Pat Folkerson for the passing of his mother. And, and I've been holding this in my notes for a while, and so here goes. I understand that a pitcaron officer was hired as a second SRO by the school district, and he has no police powers inside Monroeville, just on school district property. Is that correct, Mr. Dice?
That's correct.
Okay. That is certainly up to Mrs. Zetti and the school district. However, I guess they can hire any officer from anywhere, as long as they have the certifications. Is that, would that be correct?
Yes.
Okay. As my understanding, this officer does not live in the Gateway School District boundaries, nor does he pay taxes here. It is also through my investigation, found out that one of the complaints about the Monroeville officer was the amount that the school district would have to pay. Mrs. Zetti told me the amount. Upon some checking, we found out that most school districts pay the police department 75% of their wages because they're there 75% of the year. We only charge Gateway 50%. I think it's a terrible precedent to set. I'm sure the Monroeville police officers thanked Mrs. Zetti. I know I would if I was on there. And anyone else supporting the idea, it's just my opinion, but I just, I took it as an insult. So to confirm, there's no intergovernment agreement on this issue as far as a second SRO working at a school, especially with somebody from outside the Monroeville Police Department. And last but not least, there was a statement made that myself and the mayor had a meeting with Mrs. Zetti on this issue concerning the second police officer. And I just want to confirm, as the mayor's sitting here, that what had actually happened was, I asked Mrs. Zetti if the fire companies could, with the state police's cooperation, weigh their fire trucks, weigh their fire vehicles in the old Monroeville Junior High or Monroeville Middle School's parking lot. And she told me she would, but I had to let her know when. I was talking with the mayor one day, I said I knew the date. He said, "Let's take a drive over." So we went over to the school district office, I went upstairs, and basically obtained her permission for the state police to weigh the fire department vehicles in the parking lot. While I was there, I asked her why a pitcaron police officer is the second SRO, and her response was one word, money. And can you give me an SRO for $30,000? And that was it. That was basically the end of the conversation. I don't support this. I don't want the residents to think or know that we as council had an opportunity to discuss this, approve it, or even, you know, support a pitcaron police officer working in Monroeville in the boundaries. And that's all.
Nick?
Yes, Mayor. Just make a comment as far as procedure goes, that might have reared itself this evening. As far as the conditional use hearings that we went through, and it's always traditionally been at the council meeting, I don't know if this council would consider, or if maybe this is a question from Mr. Dice, if, you know, moving forward, if there'd be a policy, maybe that we have these conditional use hearings during our work session on the Thursday, which would, you know, give us time to, you know, digest the information and go over things again and revisit these things prior to a Tuesday vote, instead of falling into a situation like we did this evening where an applicant comes here with a lot of testimony, a lot of information, and certainly it's reasonable for the council to push it off until the next month's meeting, and that's certainly, I'm sure the residents don't like that, and also the applicants don't like that either, but if we could maybe look at doing that in the future, as far as maybe the work session set the conditional use hearings, and then actually just have the actual vote on the Tuesday regular council meeting. So, Mr. Dice, I don't know...
I think it's an excellent idea. I think that it gives you the opportunity then of having Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday to think about what's going on. The legislature has built in that 45-day window for you, for the very purpose of contemplating what it is that you think is important after hearing the testimony. Oftentimes, conditional use applications aren't as complicated as this one might be, as you saw tonight with the charade lounge versus the temple. One's much bigger than the other, one's much more involved than the other, and I would suggest to you that henceforth, scheduling conditional use hearings at the workshop sessions is a good idea, because no vote takes place at that time, no vote takes place at the hearing. The vote has to take place at the regular meetings.
So would that be something that the mayor would actually?
I can, we can change that, yeah. I think, yeah, I think it's the direction of council. You just have to direct your staff.
Okay.
And I don't hear anybody objecting to that. Everybody think it's a good idea?
I do.
Okay. So the staff's corrected.
What else you got there, Nick?
Okay, moving on. Along the same lines, as far as tonight's meeting, a tip of the hat to Mark Shufa, went through a lot of stuff and a lot of questions, and nice job this evening. Also downstairs, Mr. Habala, Joe Habala, who's producing the TV show here, you know, flipping the cameras back and forth and getting all the pictures. The unsung hero of all these meetings, Joe's down there, doing a great job as always. And then Sharon, great job this evening, too, keeping it all together and documenting it all forever.
Wait a minute, she's the one that was making us laugh.
As far as the budget, Mr. Little touched on this, and I'll actually commend him for getting things put together, but a tip of the hat to Mr. Lally, all the employees in the finance department, all the department heads for getting this document together. It's certainly, it's always a challenge every year, and it's going to be a challenge for council and for everybody, but getting to this point is definitely difficult, so a good job to all the employees getting that put together. Recreation Department, couple events coming up for Halloween. There is a pumpkin decorating night, which is next Thursday, I'm sorry, two Thursdays, October, what is today?
14th.
14th. The deadline is actually this Thursday, the 16th, if you are interested. The event is held Thursday, the following Thursday, October 23rd. What it is, it's from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. It's free. Bring your own pumpkin. All the supplies and paint will be provided by the Recreation Department, and there'll be judging and prizes as well. So that is at the Community Park West. There is a, like I said, a deadline for reservation, registration rather, this Thursday, October 16th. You can do that at the Rec Department. Halloween Family Fun Night is October 25th. That is the Saturday. There's no registration for that. Just show up, it's always a great, great time, great evening. 6:00 PM, Saturday the 25th, at the Monroeville Community Park West, pavilions 1 and 3. If you are driving out Tilbrook, it'd be the second entrance to the community park is where those big pavilions are. It's been going on for many years, it's always a great evening. Creepy activities, arts and crafts, costume judging contests, carved pumpkin contests. However, at this one, pumpkins must be previously carved, you bring them there. Hay rides, refreshments. It's a lot of fun, no registration necessary. So Saturday the 25th, 6:00 PM. And then October 31st, as everyone knows is Halloween, trick-or-treating is from May 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
That is correct.
Okay, Friday the 31st. So Pumpkin Decorating Night, October 23rd, Thursday. Halloween Family Fun Night, October 25th, Saturday. And then the 31st is Trick or Treat. So get out and enjoy those activities. And then once again, condolences to Mr. Folkerson and his family for their loss. And Mr. Harvey, to you, a congratulations to you and your wife Nancy for the marriage of your daughter. You made it through a weekend that I do not look forward to down the road. I've got a few more years before I have to worry about that, but I know those years pass very quickly, but congratulations to you and your family. And that's all I have this evening.
Linda?
I'll just say, you know, keep an eye out for the children when they're out trick-or-treating, you know, always keep an eye out for the kids, that's important. I think I said thank you for the work for the budget that was put in on Thursday, but I'll reiterate that. I also would like to thank Mr. Shufa for all the information that you gave us. It was very helpful. And I would also like to thank the people from the temple for answering our questions and providing as much information as you did as well. And lastly, I'm going to follow up with what Mr. Harvey was speaking about, because at a September Citizens Night, I informed the public of Gateway hiring this non-Monroeville trained police officer as the second SRO. And so I've had some questions about it, so I'm just going to give you the facts as I know them. The Gateway Superintendent Nina Zetti stated that Gateway wrote the contract for the pitcaron SRO and that it was approved on June 25th. She also stated that this was a continued result of discussions from the February intergovernmental meeting, and that pitcaron offered an SRO at 50% pay. We were never given that opportunity. We have always supplied the SRO up there. We had actually supplied a second SRO and paid 100% of his salary until the end of the school year. She stated that Monroeville has informed the district that we could not offer to pay the 100% again, but the conversation was never brought to her attention if they wanted the second SRO at 50%. It just went to the pitcaron. So that was kind of upsetting to me. She also, speaking of the meeting that Mr. Harvey was talking about, she said that she had this meeting on July 7th with the two elected officials. Well, Gateway wrote the contract on June 25th with pitcaron, so why would there be a meeting for the SRO on July 7th if it had already been done? I can't quite understand her dates there. Let's see, I'll skip through some of this. Oh, there's another thing that needs to be known. The school district had applied for a grant to offset the cost to the municipality for the 50% that the school district would be responsible for. I don't know when they found out, but they did not get the grant. That grant went to Sunrise School. So I think that's kind of an important piece of information that's been left out of all of this. So there was an article at the Times Express of April 17th, where even Chief Cole stated that maybe municipal officials might consider splitting the cost with the school district. Well, I would have liked if they would have come to either our management, to the council itself, or to our police department to see if that was going to be an acceptable thing to go with, and they didn't do that, and that's upsetting. So in closing, I'm not in favor at all. I'll be very, very... So in closing, I'm not in favor at all, I'll be very, very clear, I'm not in favor of all of having a non-Monroeville trained police officer as an SRO in the Gateway School system. Why would we want to place an officer in a critical role that we do not know if they are as qualified and trained as one of our very own? And with that, thank you.
And I'll be real quick, I also would like to thank you, Mark, you did a great job, and also to the temple, you really opened up a lot of discussion, and we thank you for answering our questions.
[inaudible]
Hang on one second, just, I'll be real quick. And to Mr. Little, thank you, and Mr. Lally for the budget. I was just encouraged that our residents please attend those public hearings, these are your dollars, you need to hold all of our feet to the fire. And obviously, it's already been announced, Halloween will be on the 31st from 6:00 to 8:00. And last but not least, under the Home Rule Charter, it is the mayor's duty to appoint the auditor, and I'm recommending once again, Hosak Speck, Maslow and Wood, and I would seek a motion on the floor.
Motion to approve.
And there's a motion and a second?
I'm sorry, who seconded it? Mr. Wilson made the motion?
Nick did-
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you.
We'll call Sharon, please.
Mrs. Gatos?
Aye.
Dr. Greesock?
Aye.
Mr. Harvey?
Aye.
Mr. Johns?
Aye.
Mr. Clary?
Aye.
Mr. Duncan?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
And I would like to, you, you had something you wanted to say, sir?
Well, I would like to, thanks all of you for hearing us, and my statement is love all, serve all, let us live together, let us love together, let us progress together, let us work together. Hom, serenity, tranquility, peace to all beings, and amen.
Very good, and with that is, I'll seek a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you and good night, ladies and gentlemen.